...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this moment, I would like to press.
Role call.
Excuse me, the role call, that's very important. Virginia, role call, please.
Mayor Brinquino.
Here.
Councilmember Barbosa.
Here.
Councilmember Danko.
Here.
Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
Mayor, all members are present.
Very good, thank you.
City manager has called in.
Yes. City manager left some comments as to why this meeting took place and as why it took so fast. And I, before you even go, I want to thank my colleagues for being so kind and being here this morning on such a short notice. So, Mr. Morton?
Sir, I'm mayor. For purposes of procedure, I wanted to make the record clear this morning. The special meeting was called by the vice mayor now, the acting mayor, as he recognized an emergency situation, a situation that has not yet, to my knowledge, existed in the city of Palm Coast, and that was created by this vacancy. Exigent circumstances exist as the vice mayor is leaving the country on a pre-approved medical/humanitarian trip. Myself, as the city manager, is going to be absent for a period of time to attend to a previously scheduled medical matter. It'll begin Thursday, and I do not have an end date for return. We have a deadline under the charter to call a special election. There's a recognized need to get this vacancy filled because of the upcoming setting of the adverberate rates and the statutory processes included in the city budget. The special meeting was called under the charter Article IV, Section 8, for the specific reference, when that emergency situation exists and it's not possible to give longer notice. And then lastly, I would just opine that in the interest of process, just as an opinion, the city manager, I think the public is better served, the public interest is better served on the public knowing how this council is moving forward without waiting 30 days or until we all can return, by the council setting the path forward and letting the council, or let the community be informed of a process so they know where, in this time, state is still under a state of emergency, they know where the process and the election is headed and it's clearly published and noticed with as much pre-information as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. We shall now proceed with the appointment. Due to the fact that vice mayor had become an acting mayor due to the circumstances, we would like to appoint, just in case, a vice mayor on my absence. At this moment, I'm going to pass the gavel to the person with the most seniority here, which is Nick Clufus, and I'll make a motion to appoint acting vice mayor Nick Clufus. Is there a second?
How must I pass the gavel if I were to make a second?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All right. Heads up, Victor. I will second that.
You're the acting chairman of the meeting. Where we stand right now procedurally is there is a motion to appoint Mr. Clufus, Councilmember Clufus, as the acting vice mayor, and that motion needs a second for further action.
Yep, I will second.
Okay.
So where we are now, Mr. Chairman, is that you have a motion and it's been seconded. The next step would be to have discussion on that, and then a vote to determine, because we have, we have the current vice chairman folks, excuse me, the vice mayor, who's the acting mayor. So there's a recognized need to fill the acting vacant position of vice mayor. And the motion is to appoint Mr. Clufus, and for purposes of the assistance for the council in making their decision, your council rules and procedures do provide that in the absence of the mayor and the vice mayor, the city council members, in order of their seniority, in order of their seniority, shall chair the meeting.
Point of order, Mr. Richmond? Is that a set in stone requirement?
It's your council rules and procedures, so yes, it's set in stone.
So we have, so why even have a vote if there's no, if it's set in stone? Excuse me.
Well, whenever you appoint a vice mayor, this council does it. And the charter does require that, the charter requires that, for the appointment of a vice mayor, it's the council that shall do it, so it's not.
So this is not a set in stone procedure then that we have to follow?
No, it is set in stone, and that, from the standpoint of who makes the decision, who makes the appointment, it's the council that makes the appointment for the, for the vice mayor. Here, let's be very clear, this is not replacing the acting mayor permanently, this is just to fill the vacancy for the, for the acting, for the vice mayor until, this is confusing, until we have a new mayor, and so Mr. Brinquino will go back to being, not the, he won't be the acting mayor anymore, he'll be his vice chairman.
Now, we've not.
This is just a temporary.
We've not set a date on this special election yet, so we don't know when we're going. So perhaps we should do that before we move forward and select an acting vice mayor?
We have, we have a motion on the floor, so action needs to be taken on that, on that motion, before we can move forward.
Got it.
From a procedural standpoint, we've got to clear the table, if you will.
Okay, got it.
Procedurally, I've been vice mayor twice before, and I've run, I've run the meetings quite well for a sustained period of time, when the mayor was unfortunately dealing with her daughter's original issues, the transplant. I can tell you, I understand Robert's rule of law, and I can, I can chair a meeting if necessary, but am I correct in saying that ideally, we wouldn't even meet again while I'm still vice mayor essentially, if this were to pass? This isn't something that's permanent, and then once the election occurs, my title goes back to just being council member, and then it would be acting vice mayor Brinquino, is that, that's correct?
Absolutely.
Whoever gets appointed to be the acting vice mayor, their role will be, only come into play if Mr. Brinquino is unable to be at a meeting.
But I understand Councilman Brinquino is leaving the country, though, is that correct?
He is.
And that is going to happen, like, soon?
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning, so that's soon, yes.
That's the thing called Zoom.
Yeah.
That's the thing called Zoom, that if there's another meeting, that it's an emergency meeting, it could be done by someone.
I don't know what meetings this council will have scheduled or will be participating in, conducting, between this morning and upon the return of the acting mayor. Assuming that there are going to be council meetings while the acting mayor is out of the country, the attorney general has repined that in extraordinary circumstances, someone, as long as there's a physical quorum present, someone who is unable to attend physically can, can attend and participate and vote and run a meeting remotely. And extraordinary circumstances have been defined as a medical situation, it's not like where you got to, it wouldn't be where you have to go to your, to your child's soccer game, although some people will say that's an emergency, but, but it's got to be something that's extraordinary. And, and so this council has already, I think it was at a prior meeting, has already recognized for Mr. Brinquino, for the, for the acting mayor, that his absence meets those circumstances. So, to your point, to your point, if this council has a meeting between now and his return from Portugal, he would be able to participate as the acting mayor to chair the meeting remotely.
So you're going to be gone for how long?
Until the 20th.
Till the 20th of next month?
Yes, sir.
So we'll have meetings between now and then?
I don't know, that's going to be up to, to the city manager, and we don't have to have, as long as you, you only have by law, one business meeting a month, that's all you have to have.
Right.
And as long as we have it, the 22nd or the 29th, that's absolutely okay. So we will, we will not be violating any rules and regulations.
So, Ms. Morton, do we plan on having meetings between now and Councilman Brinquino's return?
There will be.
Are we going to stick to a regular schedule?
I do not know. I haven't, I haven't seen the agenda to come forward yet, haven't finalized an agenda. We have five opportunities for meetings in the month of June, for both a workshop and a public meeting, and I haven't gotten that far yet, I've spent the night working on the matter before us today.
Just so everyone understands, where we are right now, today's meeting is under discussion, under a pending motion that's been seconded.
Can I amend that motion?
You can make a motion to amend.
I'd like to make a motion to amend it, that we table this till after we decide when the election is going to be, that we put the election date first and then return to this item.
All right, so there, there's a motion, that, that motion needs a second.
Yeah, but if, before you, can I know why?
Because I just think we should get the.
Procedurally, procedurally, the motion needs to be seconded before there's any discussion.
Before we discuss it, I'm sorry, apologize.
So there's a motion waiting for a second.
Well, the motion he made, I'm.
You were not, okay.
I could second the motion that was made by.
Absolutely, you passed the gavel.
Yes. I make that motion, I thought that was already done, so we went into discussions before we go into a vote.
No, no, that's not where we are. There is a motion on the floor to table the prior motion to appoint Councilmember Clufus as acting vice mayor. The motion to table is awaiting a second.
I can't second it.
You have the gavel.
Pass the gavel.
At this point, I think you have to pass it to the only one that's left, that's going to be the gentleman to your right.
I'll second the one.
We're running, we're running out of gavel holders.
You're next, Bill.
No, no.
You're next.
All right. I want to hear what he has to say about it.
Okay.
I'm just saying we should get to the business at hand, which is setting the date for this election, then we can come back and wrap up this other stuff. That's my, that's my reason, let's get to what's important.
Sorry to, to be jumping in here, is there any further discussion on the motion to table? If not, your role as the, as the, as the chairperson is to call for the vote.
I'll call the vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'll oppose.
Opposed, nay.
Motion fails, two-two vote, as always, you know, a motion fails unless it receives a majority. So where we are right now is we are coming back to the main motion, which is to appoint Councilmember Clufus as the acting vice mayor.
Since I have the gavel, I will make the motion, all in favor of appointing Councilman Clufus as vice mayor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
That motion fails as well, we now have no motion on the floor.
Okay, I would like to have the gavel back, please. We'll proceed without a vice mayor.
Thank you.
There will not be one appointed today. Don't make that short.
Unless there is another motion made before the end of the meeting.
I doubt it, I doubt it.
Fine, just want to clarify from procedure.
All right. Let's go, item D, the ordinance, would you be so kind to read the ordinance, sir?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. This is an emergency ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, admitting Article IV, City Council of the City of Palm Coast Charter, regarding qualifying for office, and Article Roman numeral seven, elections, with limited applicability to the establishment of qualifying dates for the city of Palm Coast, Palm Coasts, excuse me, July 27, 2021, special election only, pursuant to Florida statute Sections 100.3605, subsection two, and 166.021, subsection four. This emergency ordinance provides for severability, codification, conflicts, and effective date. I believe your city clerk has the presentation.
Mayor, city council, you have three options before you. The first option, I don't have the whole agenda open, I apologize. No, yeah. The first option waives the petition requirement. The second option will waive both qualifying methods, which would be the petition requirement as well as the fee. And the third option does not waive either. There would be 457 petitions that would need to be gathered by each candidate for mayor, and they would have to be verified by the supervisor of elections. The date suggested for that is next week, so they would have one week with this schedule that's being presented, to gather 497 petitions. Early voting, also, I received notice from the supervisor of elections this morning, would be July 17 through July 24 at all three locations. That would be for her office, the supervisor's office in Benel, the community center, as well as the Flagler County Library. The election day would be July 27, with certification on July 30 from the supervisor of elections, and then we could have that mayor sworn in at the April, sorry, the August 6 meeting. So the timeline is short. The reason we need to have the election a little bit further out is there are 20,000 mail-in ballots that have been requested for the city of Palm Coast ballots for our voters, so it takes time, and she needs at least 50 days for whatever timeframe we choose.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments regarding this matter?
So comment, just to put it out there, if you don't, thank you for that. I don't think it's necessary to waive either of these requirements, and I'm not sure how you gentlemen feel, but just my personal opinion, I think that's plenty of time if someone's serious about running for mayor to either. Self-fulfill the 14, the $1,100 or the 497 petitions, I think that's both reasonable and a, it's a good qualification to show that someone's serious, whether they can get 500 signatures or, you know, ante up $1,100, so that's just my opinion.
I agree with that.
I don't know, it's a lot of signatures in a short period of time. I mean, it is a lot of signatures.
And the signatures are collected citywide, they're not just from a certain district, they, for the mayor seat, it is citywide.
It is citywide?
Yes.
So the option is pay the money or get the signatures?
I think we should.
So we require, sure, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
How many, how much, what is the fee?
$1,140.
Okay, yeah, all right.
All right, so I have no, no further comments, I just think that option three is the option to go for, so.
I'll make the motion for option three.
I have motioned.
Okay, let's be clear for the record, the motion is for the ordinance, selecting option three, which is not waiving the requirements, the normal requirements, of either getting the signatures or filing, or paying the funds that we just identified, in order to qualify for this special election, to fill the vacancy in the mayor.
And the signatures need to be gathered by?
Next Friday.
Next Friday, okay.
So as soon as they hand in their paperwork, they are able to go out and gather petitions. DSD E9 and DSD E84 are the required paperworks to open the account.
We have a motion, we have a second, we need to open it up to the public, to see if there is anyone that would want to speak on this matter.
All right, I didn't, to be honest with you, I wasn't aware that there was a, going to be a public input in this one, but.
This is required by, by Florida law and the Florida statutes to, this, any formal action taken by this council, even in an emergency situation, requires, requires allowing the public to speak.
That was my question, okay? Any member of the public that wishes to speak on this matter? You have three minutes, please come to the podium, say your name, and they only have three minutes.
I'm sorry, I missed who seconded.
I did.
Thank you.
First, I'd like to say that I sincerely hope and pray that Mayor Holland's daughter, her health improves if it's going down, and that she, she gets as healthy as the rest of us. I agree with the option three. Let's make sure people that want to run for this office are willing to put in the work and do it. I, I think you guys are making the right decision on that. And again, I sincerely hope that her daughter, her daughter's health improves.
Thank you, Alan, thank you. Any further speakers? Anyone else who wish to speak regarding this matter? Earring on? Okay, bringing it back to this buddy, any further comments?
I'm done.
I'll call for a vote, all those in favor, say.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I guess no need to ask if anybody against it. All right, Virginia?
The emergency ordinance is adopted by a unanimous vote of four to zero for the record.
Okay. Item E, on the resolutions, would you be so kind to read the resolution, sir?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, this is a resolution of the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, calling for July 27, 2021, special election, for the vacant mayor seat, providing for special election processes and procedures, providing for implementing actions, providing for severability for conflicts, and providing for an effective date. Before I turn it over to the city clerk, I just wanted to say that the city administration greatly appreciates the quick cooperation that has been provided to the city of Palm Coast from the supervisor of election and her office, in allowing us to be able to, to meet this, the situation that we, that we have, we face with this unexpected situation. So I just wanted to, to say thanks to her and to her, to her office.
Couldn't do it without Ms. Lenhart, the supervisor of elections, she's been wonderful to work with, and I too thank her for all of her assistance as well. With regards to this resolution, since you chose option three on the ordinance, it's basically mirroring in the, in the resolution, calling for the special election to be on July 27, as well as no waiver of the petition or the qualifying fee, and it sets forth all of the dates that we need to move forward with the election to be held on July 27.
Thank you very much, Virginia, I'll bring it back to this panel, any further comments?
None.
Any further comments?
I just have a, two, two questions. July 27 is the election, and one of, what are the primary days?
There will be no primary, this is a special election.
So just one election day?
One election, whoever gets the most votes is, is going to be filling the vacancy.
Got it.
Perhaps you mean early voting, is that?
Early voting, as I mentioned earlier, is July 17.
That's what I meant, early voting, that's, I'm sorry, yes, sorry, that's what I meant, my fault. Yeah, early voting is when?
July 17 through July 24.
17 through the 24th, and one other question, do we know how much this election is costing our taxpayers?
The last estimate I had was, back from 2011, was at 50,000. I've been working with Katie this morning, she's waiting to hear back from her vendor, but she said it will be substantially a lot higher than that 50,000, so probably upwards of 100,000 is where it will look like being. There's 20,000 mail-in ballots that have been requested, and each one of those gets, has to be mailed out first class certified.
21,000 mail-in ballots have been requested for this election?
They're on the list that that's what they, for the city of Palm Coast voters, they're on the list that they would like to receive mail-in ballots, so those are those that she would send the mail-in ballots to.
Do they not have to request them for every election? Or do they make just one request and then for the rest of their lives, they get mail-in ballots?
I believe it's one request, and it's good for at least a year, for the elections that are held in that, within that year timeframe.
But we're not certain of that, though, are we?
No, but those are the, like, she told me there's 20,000 mail-in ballots that she will have to send out. I don't believe that they have to every single election, like, contact her, I want one, so it's a special election, whatsoever on the books, those are those that she's going to mail to.
There's no way of waiving that, huh?
Waiving mail-in ballots? No, that you can't waive.
Make it in-person voting?
The option, especially given COVID.
I, I think we just need to find out for certain what those, that that deadline is. It's, these are folks that requested mail-in ballots for the last election in November, I want to make certain that it's, you know, not six months away, where they would have to request again.
From my experience with it, I've always seen it where they've, they've been on record for at least a year, they're the ones that are going to get those ballots.
We can follow up with supervisor of elections.
This is the supervisor of elections, rather than speculate.
Yeah, we'll follow up with the supervisor of elections and let everyone know.
Absolutely, actually, we have no control over that. We don't, we don't.
Supervisor.
That's the supervisor that handles that.
We don't get involved with that.
But we need to know, your point is well taken.
We need, I'm saying, we just need to know.
We'll get that information and promulgate it.
Okay.
Again, the, the action that you're, that this resolution, this action, is, is the action that is actually required by your charter to fill the vacancy, and it does say that within this brief period of time, we are required by resolution, this, this action, to call for a special, you know, election, so that, that's why, that's the main reason we're here.
And if we're looking at 100,000, my only other question, and I assume Mr. Morton can answer that, does this come out of the general fund?
Yes, probably, yeah.
There's no other place to pay for it.
Okay, I didn't know if there was anything special that we have set up, little, you know, a little rainy day.
We budget a little money for elections, but I doubt there's enough in there to cover this.
Yeah, there was only 5,000 budgeted because it was coming off an election year, so it was mostly for ads in conjunction with our county elections. So when the city switched to having the ballots on the county elections, it saved the city astronomically.
Okay, thank you.
Very good, I have no further comments on this, I'll take this, to the public, anyone who wishes to come.
Well, we need, we, do we have a motion?
We do not, but I will, I will make.
To approve the resolution.
I will make a motion to fill the vacant mayor's seat via a special election that will be held on July 27, 2021.
I'll second it.
Okay, we don't have to take this to the public.
No, 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 this is, absolutely, yeah, public always gets their opportunity.
And I did get confirmation from the supervisor of elections that the ballots that were requested last year as mail-in ballots are good through the election end of 2022.
There you go.
Thank you.
Good response.
Told you she's good.
She is good.
We have a motion and a second, and before we bring it to a vote, shall I ask?
Yes, for the public.
Okay, I thought that was going to be done before we actually.
That's all right, as long as we get it done, that's the important thing.
That's the main thing, so right now, we'll take it back to the public, and if anybody has any comments regarding this election, this vacant mayor seat, please be so kind, please state your name to the record.
Megan Rizzo, hi, good morning, everyone, I just want to find out, because we're specifically talking about these 21,000 mail-in ballots, I just want to find out that the dollar amount of what that's actually going to cost the residents, because you said the total was possibly going to exceed $100,000.
Upwards of, of 100,000 is just a rough estimate.
And is that because of the mail-in ballots, is my, is my question, like.
Keep going, I'm not really supposed to answer until you're done, I'm sorry.
Okay, let's finish the, the public comment then, I'm sorry, I guess this is like a real unique situation here, but anyway, I just kind of wanted to bring that up because I'm concerned about that cost, so, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further comments? No, I'll bring it back to.
Hang on, we've got one more, one more gentleman.
Oh, sorry.
My name is Joan de Silva, and I am one of those that requested a mail-in voting because I was out of the country in the past election, I no longer need that, and I would hope that every time that there is a, a request of a mail-in vote, that it's done on a particular situation, and as, as needed, not for a year. Do I have to call the, the elections department and tell them that I no longer need those two? Because there are two votes that I requested, two people, that requested for that vote. I do?
Once you're done with your comments, then we'll answer it.
I am done.
Beautiful. Next, is there anybody else who wishes to speak regarding this matter?
Sir, we answer all the questions at the end of public comment.
Thank you.
Okay, both, have you seen, anybody up?
No.
Seeing that none, no further comments, would you like to answer those two questions for Mr. Joan de Silva and Ms. Megan Rizzo, correct?
Sure, I'll, the quicker one is the mail-in ballots, yes, you do have to contact the supervisor of elections, anytime you have a change in your request, whether it be mail-in ballot or if you're going to then go back, so that she can cancel it in time. So if you wish to cancel, please make sure you contact the supervisor of elections, their phone number's 386-313-4170. In regards to the cost, I'm still working with Katie Lenhart on getting the accurate estimate. This morning, I received word that the deposit will be due in the middle of June for the ballots of $25,000. So that's just for the ballots alone, and then we have to continue from there up to, for the entire election.
Thank you, I hope that cleared the questions that were asked.
For, I'm sorry.
Hold on, I gotta bring it back to the panel first. Is there any further questions from the public out there? Earring none, I'll bring it back to this buddy, do we have a further question?
Question for Virginia, so if you requested a mail-in ballot, can you still go and vote in person?
Yes.
Okay.
So I, I have a question, and it's either for Virginia or for our attorney, just to clear up Florida law and these mail-in ballots, because there, there still is confusion about it. My understanding was that if you requested an absentee ballot, you needed to be absent, is that correct or incorrect? Did COVID change that in Florida?
No, there is not, I mean, the, the standards for receiving and being able to utilize an absentee ballot were not changed by the emergency proclamations. There have been some recent changes to voting regulations by the legislature, but I will defer to Virginia if she has any further comment on this.
I don't have any update with the law with Katie, I can check with her and get back to you.
And, and this is a concern only because, and I think someone in public comment mentioned it, if you requested a mail-in ballot because you were out of the country, I mean, that's fine, but if we're going to be sending out, or if Katie's going to be sending out mail-in ballots to people whose status has changed, that, that's a concern, because they're no whose status has changed, that, that's a concern, because they're no longer out of the country. They're here, if that's the requirement. And I think we need to know that, and if they're just going to send out a bunch of mail-in ballots to folks who really now shouldn't be getting them because their status has changed, that's something that's not very good.
Certainly valid concerns. My suggestion for the council and for the city clerk is that we raise these issues, because these are really issues that need to be addressed to and answered by the supervisor of election. She controls the election.
For posterity, Bill, we don't, as a city entity, as a governing body, we don't actually have any oversight. I shouldn't say oversight. We don't have any impact on actually the dispersal or the mailing of these mail-in ballots. We don't make any body, any decisions as a governing body that would have an impact on those, correct?
No.
I just want to clear it for posterity.
Florida law is clear that the supervisor has control over the questions and the concerns that you raised. My, my suggestion is that the city clerk can reach out to the supervisor, get these, get these questions answered, and then to the extent that you all are comfortable with, can put the information either on our website or request the supervisor make sure it's clear on her website, so that there are several sources that the public can go to, to try to, to get, you know, where they can look on, on, you know, the websites and get answers to these questions. That would be my suggestion.
I just want to make sure that the election that we're having is going to be legitimate, that we're not going to, because of these mail-in ballots, run into a situation where people are questioning, as we've just heard during public comment, the situation. And I'm not sure how we do that.
Well, Councilmember Danko, this, this, this election will be conducted by the supervisor of elections pursuant to Florida law as the supervisor of election conducts all of her elections. And the fact that it is a special election doesn't change that. I would imagine that the concerns that you have raised are concerns that could apply in a regular election as well.
Absolutely.
So they're really, from the, because we're calling this a special election, really doesn't change the rules. It just means that the supervisor is going to apply the existing rules, the current ongoing rules, to this special election. There's nothing unique about the rules for this other than that we, we are having to have a special election and calling this for a specific time, and then, and then changing the qualifying methods, well, not the methods, but the timeframe. That's really the only change.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I think that, and any questions regarding this, that we, any one of us have, would have to be done with the supervisor of elections.
Correct.
Because it would be unfair for us to be in a position to answer to someone out there without really knowing or, or, you know, having any power over this. So it would be unfair to tell anybody anything that wouldn't be other than the truth. So I think that any, any one of us, public out there, has any questions regarding the way that those elections are going to be conducted, it's Katie Lenhart. And I think she's a straight shooter. She will tell.
Oh, I'm not questioning her. I'm just questioning these mail-in ballots and the circumstances for which they were requested.
So, sorry to interrupt.
And if those circumstances have changed, and folks who weren't going to be here are now here, if that is in fact Florida law still.
But absenteeism was never a requirement for a mail-in ballot. You can actually receive your mail-in ballot and then not use it and then go day of. You just can't duplicate your vote. You want to be able to mail in your ballot and then day of show up and also.
And that was the question I wanted to address, is are absentee ballots, are you required to be absent?
Yeah.
Which is a valid question, but I think should, once again, should be posed to Katie. You know, in the name of fairness, I think that's, she is the one that should be answering that question.
I agree.
And, and to clarify, I did receive work back, back from Katie. It is the voter's responsibility to request the mail-in ballot. There are guidelines and timeframes of how long that absentee ballot request is good for. That's right on the request when they fill it out. So absentee ballots are sent out, like Councilmember Clufus said, for people that are absent or also because of COVID last year, they don't want to necessarily go to the polls. So the, there's checks and balances when you go in for, to, to vote. If you've, if they've already received your mail-in ballot, then it pops out. They let you vote, but then it's considered a provisional ballot, and the canvassing board then will decide, decipher, is it a good ballot or is it not? So there's, the, the canvassing board is set up for those checks and balances as well.
Any further questions or comments? Then I'll be calling for a vote. Do I have a motion? Excuse me, do I have a motion for, call for a vote? Do I have a motion on this?
I'll make the motion.
They already had a motion to approve option three by Councilmember Clufus, seconded by Danko.
Okay.
This is for the resolution with option number three. Motion has been made, seconded. I think we're, I think we're concluded with discussion.
Absolutely. So all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody says no?
No.
Let it be known that it's passed four to zero. Next item, not on the agenda. Virginia, would you please tell us about the canvassing board situation, please?
Sure. In regards to when the city has a standalone election, which will be this, a special election standalone, the city's required to be their canvassing board. In accordance with the charter, the canvassing board consists of myself and the supervisor of elections, and then a person appointed by the city council. Katie Lenhart is also suggesting that we appoint an alternate. So at the next meeting, so at the next meeting, we'll have that on the agenda for council to bring forth your options of who you would like to appoint, and then you will have a discussion and pick a member of the canvassing board and an alternate member for the canvassing board.
So at the proper time, I think we'll vote on it. There's no further, you know, anything else is needed to do this. So let me see, if I got anything else missing over here. Any other comments that we have over here?
That's all I have.
I just have a quick question. The voting will occur at the library?
Yeah, three places.
At the county?
The, the early voting will be at the three locations.
The remainder is at the precincts.
Election day will be at your precinct.
At all, okay.
And I would, I would assume, and I, this is just an assumption, that's probably where the majority of the money comes from for this $100,000, is because they still have to put all the equipment out to all X number precincts, only in the City of Palm Coast, fortunately, this time. But that's where the money comes.
All right. Due to the fact that we weren't able to nominate or appoint a vice mayor today, in case, if need be, the person representing me while I'm away would be the person with the most seniority, which is basically the same. So you will not have the title, but you will have the person, you will have the power to actually take over. If there's need for anything, which I doubt. But also, I would like to finish this by saying, Mr. Morton, if there's anything, you know how to get in touch with me if there's anything that should be done in the meetings, please see what you could do regarding meetings without any disruptions to the city business and keep it within the law according to state law and charter law. Okay? Anything else that you want to wish, sir? You wish to say, sir? Anybody else? Any final comments? Mr. Morton, any final comments? Any final comments? Virginia, regarding this, any comments you have regarding, anything that was not said?
No, thank you for helping me make my job a little easier today.
I would also, I would thank the supervisor elections for this, for her fielding this opportunity for another election, you know, out of the blue. So thank you, Katie and team. I'm sure they're listening, and also city staff.
I think we have the best supervisor elections in all of Florida State, to be honest with you. Straight shooter, honest woman, and I think she's going to do the proper thing, the right thing. And once again, thanks for your concerns. I think they were valid points.
Yeah, I just wanted an answer to them, since we got it from the public and, you know.
Unfortunately, in name of fairness, I think that she is the one to answer. And once again, she's a straight shooter. Okay, at this point, I'll entertain another chairman.
I will move to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, sir. Meeting is over.